And we have John Legarza here with us and he's gonna fill us in on all the wonderful things he's bringing to the table. Uh, so I'll just let you take it away and have it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, John Legarza, Health Sustainable Communities and City Manager Wagner and Assistant City Manager Elena Turpin and the City Attorney Watts. Pleasure to be back here with you all again this evening and happy been working with the staff here. And excited, I know we talked in January about a goal for your 2024 session was to look at establishing an Economic Development Commission here. So we have in front of you tonight, this work session is a draft resolution to talk about, and I have a PowerPoint here just to go through here. And Sadie, if we could up to the second page in there, so. Great, thank you. So again, work session tonight here, just to solicit feedback from everyone here, talking about the Economic Development Commission. Uh, was part of your strategic goals in 2024 was to establish an Economic Development Commission. I'm really excited for that. And basically, you're gonna, you know, go through the brief of the resolution here tonight. Uh, how the overview of the Economic Development Commission will be set up. And again, the purpose here is just to get feedback from all of you tonight and hopefully bring forward a resolution in April here for approval by the city council there. Uh, the next slide please. So one of the exciting things about having an EDC is this can be a great advisory board to the council here. Uh, really to support you on things around thinking about business growth, business development, workforce, attraction to key businesses, a grocery store, different industries there. So. And again, their primary focus would just to be to focus on growth in our community here, right? Prosperity, having living wage jobs and what what ability and future ways we can track to the downtown and industrial areas there too. The EDC would function just like your other commissions or committees would in town. So it would have, you know, gatherings of public input there. It'd be recommendations to the council. And again, this would be recommendations around economic development policies, plans and proposals, for example, thinking of future RFPs or ways to recruit businesses here or strategies for having businesses work in your downtown quarter area there. So that committee would help shape that, make recommendations that would come forward to the council for approval. And that's a good way to incentivize and bring businesses in your community. One of the first goals that would be after you formed your EDC would be looking at forming a strategic plan with your EDC. So really thinking about what that five-year plan would be and what the EDC members would work on that five-year plan. And that five-year plan would come forward to the council for approval there. So think around, you know, if it's enhancing broadband, you know, expansion there. Industrial employment lands, what that looks like, or downtown revitalization. It could be, you know, probably five to seven really big strategic goals and over the five years, thinking about how those goals would be implemented, funded and brought, you know, be approved there. So that helps really align with the mission of what the council is trying to move forward to. Also helps to staff to understand from a funding standpoint, the needs and areas as you build forward, you know, recruitment for your city there. Um, it's also again, think of it's a great way to build out and market and communicate to the public sector, the community and business entities. We know Estacada is growing. We were just talking, you know, talking, you know, thinking about grocery store, you know, it's something we talked about in the 2024 goals is like, you know, your potential to have another grocery store here. So that's a great way for them to be thinking about doing a study or what are some comparable ways to think about that in the future there, right? And also just thinking about, you know, collaboration with your regional, your county, your state, national organizations. You've done a great job. If you think back to the CLT recruitment before we had the pandemic, you know, it was a great opportunity working with the county and the state to attract industry here. So use the council when you see the connection of goals within the strategic plan and your goals. The leaders within, you know, higher government sees all those connections. And if you're out there talking with the county commissioner or state representative, you know, we really, hey, here's a goal that we have and here's, we have a plan that follows these opportunities in line with it there. So and it also is great for future funding that comes in available, right? So if we have it all spelled out, we have the case made, the cities, you know, working on a revitalization plan or a new urban renewal plan, right? So those are ways to be able to communicate to the community there. So um, it's gonna be a diverse member representing various sectors, uh, really to help you have a positive outcome within the city here. Next slide please. So again, thinking through like, what are the main responsibilities and objectives, right? So be designing, developing and promoting a strategic plan for the city there. Providing oversight and review of marketing strategies by the city with some, you know, traction for business recruitment, business and retention here. Enhancing the communication to the business here, acting as a forum, right? So thinking about, you know, having a listening session, maybe with your industrial park, hearing the business community. What are their needs? What do they need in the future, right? And being able to align those with your goals there too. Uh, again, just connecting with the business community and responding to requests that they may need, you know, is it, for example, uh, workforce, uh, building a relationship with your community college. Maybe there's a certain type of uh, uh, individual needed within the manufacturing and our industrial parks, right? We're seeing a lot of movement in CRM where it's a two-year degree, right? So hearing their voices and understanding if there needs to be a program aligned with like a Clackamas Community College. So building those relationships is important there. So next slide please. Okay, now we're gonna talk about the membership process here. So uh, the EDC members are gonna be appointed by the member. They're confirmed by the city council. It consists of nine voting members with uh, no more than two members from the planning, can service can, uh, commission and serve simultaneously. Eligibility, you must live, work, or have a tangible business connection to Estacada. So for example, we may have someone in the industrial park that owns their business there, but might live outside the city, but they operate within the city here. Uh, representing private for-profit, nonprofit, public sectors as well as, uh, private citizens with relevant experience. For example, we may have someone from a credit union that lives in our city. Uh, that works with small businesses. Small businesses are the backbone of America. And that might be someone that the mayor and your council that you guys might consider to be on there that provides a great connection to our business community around financing opportunities. Um, we also talked about high school students, right? And I think the charter allows that to be a and I strongly recommend that we try and recruit like a high school or two-year college student to be on there. That's a great input to have young folks providing, uh, and being active in our public service. Uh, the term limits, uh, members are appointed for three terms. They're staggering, uh, continually. So four members would serve two terms and five members would serve three terms. And ex-official members, elected officials conserve have non-voting membership rights with additional ex-official designated by the city council for relevant organization from there. So, um.
Can you go over that real quick one time? The ex-official members, just explain like an example what that looks like?
Yes.
First time ever hearing it.
Sorry. Yeah. So we, you know, for example, maybe you had, uh, someone that served before that was on city council that could, you know, uh, past member, but they wouldn't have any voting rights on their, from that standpoint. Does that help clarify that?
Or sit or currently seated?
Yeah.
City council members?
Yeah.
Like a liaison.
Liaison and and it's nice if you do have someone that could be a liaison in there. Um, that's helpful to. I find that helpful, you know, to be on an EDC to have someone for, so if the council so decided to have someone be on there and I think you do that on the, on your other committees right now, don't you? Okay, good.
Um, one thing that I'd like to see is that first line, um, I don't think we do any um, any committees anymore that are just appointed by the mayor and then confirmed by city council. All of our committees are now voted on by the entirety of the city council.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great.
But it's still by choice.
Yeah.
Not something we put into our rule, regulation. I just made it so that it could be what the groups want, and that's what we're gonna go for this point. So it's still what I can do, unless we change.
We'll double check how it's phrased and the other, the other.
Would it make sense to have three for the first three years, three for two years, three for one, so that we have three rotated? You can re-up the three, um, but we're, there's three new members every year or or reappointees versus four and five, and then one year, nothing changes.
Yeah. Okay, any other thoughts on the membership there?
I did look real quick and it does say, uh, statutory and advisory board members are appointed by council motion. So that that's what it is in our board appointments code.
Next slide, Sadie. So just the timeline is staff would bring back, uh, after we, you know, get your input here tonight, a resolution in April, probably the second meeting, we're thinking in April would come back there. And then I think the key thing would be to have staff start working on a draft strategic EDC strategic plan there. If you approve your resolution, uh, probably you're looking at probably May, June for having the application alive to have people apply from that standpoint and then bringing those members to you for approval, probably looking at June, uh, with, you know, being able to launch the EDC at the beginning of July there. That would also give the EDC at their first meeting, having a strategic plan to start providing some input and work to work on at the beginning of the year there. So. So happy to take any questions, thoughts, input.
So you propose and you say, start the, the draft of the EDC strategic plan, um, or you're just getting some groundwork laid out and then, but later I enhancing it with the commission once they're in place.
Correct. Yeah. I think, you know, there's, there's definitely opportunities to think about. You know, the main kind of like five segments, if you're working in business, you know, recruitment, business retention, industrial lands, you know, what kind of, what are those things, you know, basic around economic development that need to be looked at from a holistic standpoint? That framework can be started now, so then you can at least put that in front. And then, you know, you might have a little bit more focus in one area that you see from your EDC. So, you know, maybe it is on industrial and maybe it's on grocery store, maybe it's on your downtown revitalization. All those are gonna be a component of within your strategic plan. But then also that helps them to start thinking and working with staff, like where's the timing for some of this could fall over the, over five-year plans to really align from that standpoint there. So.
So then that that first thing that we would do, just basically keep it high level. These are, are the main points.
And that could come to council just to get some feedback on, you know, just to kind of be kind of run on a parallel path, but at the same time recognizing that here's kind of the framework we're gonna be working on. But at the same time, when it goes to them, you know, you'll have a kind of understanding what's gonna be coming back to you from that standpoint.
So the council would look at it initially, like as a framework, give some input and tweak that a little bit. Send it to the EDC when they get started. They fill in the, uh, everything that goes on, the bones that that were have been developed and it then would again would come back to the council.
I like that because I think it really helps kind of align with your goals, what you were thinking in January. And then, you know, going forward to have that input would be helpful. Gives them, gives them a little bit of direction, but also helps them to kind of build it into more depth from that side.
Oh, I, I know we've, we've been working towards alleviating, uh, city staff of extra um, extra work. I mean, is this something bringing this on board? Are we gonna have to, you know, hire another person? Are we gonna be able to, you know?
Let us go. Oh, yeah, sure. Um, we have currently an RFP out for an economic development consultant.
Okay.
So that that closes on the eighth. And so we will be hiring someone to help with that.
So we just, we brought John on for just a, a small contract to help us get this kicked off. And then we're putting in the, we'll put in the budget for next year to have a consultant on staff um, to help carry it forward. But we need to do a larger contract like that. We needed to put out RFP and, um, so that's kind of, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. Get it kicked off and then we'll have a consultant that'll help us probably for at least a couple of years, I would guess until, uh, you know, depending on what happens here, you know, how much we, how much staff can handle in-house and how much we need to, to push out. So, yeah.
Does it, does it make sense? And this might be not just for this group here, but for all of our commissions, but to have, um, you know, sunset dates put in or or checkpoints put in like every two years, if if they're not meeting the goals or every two years, if they can't recruit properly, they can't get enough people, um, we end it at that point, you know, that we, that we've got steps in there, something measurable in place. Um, that way we don't, don't keep adding commission on top of commission and maybe we don't need the EDC anymore. Maybe the, maybe at that point, the consultant, you know, looks totally valuable to have and we end up offering full-time position and not just a consultant, but how, how do we back out of something once we've started it already? If we find it's no longer. Yeah, effective. Thank you.
Or they've completed the work they're set out to do, you know?
I like it.
Do you have to put in a sunset clause or something like that for something like this or?
I, I think, you know, I kind of defer to your city attorney on this, but I think you could actually just anytime you, if you felt it was not performing, you could just bring that forward to council, you know, or council could like say, hey, we're not getting any members applying for the EDC. Do we still need the EDC there? So I think if your EDC is successful, it's something that you're always gonna want to have in your city, right? But I understand too, sometimes it is hard to get folks to want to participate and be involved, right? And I think kind of thinking about one of the things when we do the application is the time to have those people, uh, be able to meet, right? And I look, you know, I've talked with Melanie and your other committees and commissions have some times that work really well for, you know, for your community. So that's one of the things is kind of vetting that out. Um, I think the challenge sometimes that you see is that maybe you have someone that serves three or four times and you really want to have some newer energy on, on your commission. So I would think of the, you know, thinking around, and I don't know what the code would say, what you have in your charter, but um, maybe you serve two terms, right? And then if you have another business owner that has other interest in, you know, wanting to be on there and serve, that's something to think about from that standpoint there. That's kind of what I've seen more in the past is pretty well sought after to be on the EDC. Um, but like it's sometimes you might get some of those three, four terms and you're wanting different terms on there for different lengths of time.
Yeah. How, how, so in your experience is, do businesses really show, you know, interest that they, you know, maybe put a couple of people, a, a couple of applications in for different people? Or is it just something that we're gonna have to go hit, go knock on doors and recruit people for this? Um, and what do you think to get, to get?
To get.
Local business owners, you know, like, I mean, the, like some of the larger employers in town, it would be nice to have somebody from, you know, those larger employers in town, you know, represented on our EDC.
Absolutely. And I think if you think about the timing, if we have, you know, approval with your resolution and being able to put an application out there beginning of June, one of the things I would think is maybe think about doing like a a listening session in the industrial park, right? And one of the things that we could do is we could talk about, hey, we formed this EDC, we have an application available. There are companies in there that will want to, you know, people that want to be on there. And I think you, you know, you could do that there. You could put some, push it out on the, on the website and you as individuals may even know certain businesses in your downtown or other quarters that um, I think you'll get businesses applying. I find that businesses are, um, they're always interested in, um, you know, how they can expand their business or grow or connect with the city and the ones that are proactive will will pursue to want to be on there and participate. And it's, it's a great way to give back and be active and vulnerable.
Hey, John, uh, you, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, man.
Uh, you know, you used to work with the county.
Yes.
Economic development. How popular is this in cities around us? I mean, do a lot of cities have economic development in place as far as a group like we're talking about here that have actually been successful? I mean, is it?
I think the cities that are forward-thinking are really successful with it, right? So like what you're doing is, is a great step. You're getting, it's a great, it's another way to think of having a board that can provide advice to you around any initiatives you may think and that may be responsible and impact the business, right? Or recruiting a business, right? So I think that's important to have that body to be able to, and the, and the cities that think proactively about where they're going and how you're gonna, you know, attract businesses in the future, having those actors in your city uh, be a voice and being able to provide input is invaluable, right? It's really good, salty.
Can you go back one screen, Sadie? I think it was on the can you give me an example of a not-for-profit company that would be involved in economic development? Is that same, are you saying not-for-profits, not, not a nonprofit? That's not for, I mean.
A nonprofit, yeah, like a nonprofit, yeah, nonprofit.
Where would, where would they be contributing to a economic, if, if they're not a for-profit business?
You could have like a workforce group that could be a member. So like, like, yeah, you could have a workforce organization. I was thinking like Clackamas workforce could be one, you could have them, you know, you could have, so that provides a connection to workforces through to your business. That could be a way you could have it. So a lot, a lot of workforce organizations are nonprofit. You could have a union trade organization, for example, right? Could be, let's say you had a stronger, and I'm just saying, uh, Union Steelworkers Union or Electricians Union, right?
Yeah.
That could be another.
The Glazers Union just moved into the industrial park.
There you go. There's a good example of a strong nonprofit that has good living wage jobs, right? That, and so that could be someone that's very interested in making sure living wage jobs are continuing to be provided in the community.
Uh, how does city feel about, uh, this as a tool? Would you benefit from having this in place? Would this be something that you, the city could take advantage of it and feel comfortable doing?
With the commit, with the commission? Absolutely. Um, it's something that we, I think Matt would have been all over this. And when we lost Matt, we lost a lot of momentum with our economic development. Um, and I think have bringing John on with his, the, the length and the, you know, how far every, all the places that he's had experience with economic development, he can really lead this group. I think and I think Elena could probably lead it too. I am not an expert at all or even, I don't even, I'm like, feel like I'm walking in the dark with economic development and it's, I think it's really something that the council prioritizes right now. And so this, um, having John to help us set this up and then whoever we end up contracting with, with the, um, RFP when we get the proposals back for that. Um, I think that will, that allows us to work with them, but not, um, bear that full burden. And it brings in a lot of expertise that we just don't have in-house right now.
Yeah, I served on a resource board for Economic Development Corporation in the North Saniam area. And so I know what kind of input that they looked for and, and how it was able to help the community, you know, for, for things like, um, providing peer networking, providing, um, when, when people are looking to start up businesses and they're like, hey, I really want to start a bakery. Who do you have in the area? And, and the EDC was able to say, oh, I have connections with this. And so just, just that alone is something that I think our business community would benefit from.
Right. I don't necessarily like the language of the tangible business connections to Estacada. I think it's kind of vague and you can start getting into people making an argument for what's tangible business connections. If we could just define it more clearly that, that they have something other than tangible business connections. Though I think the success of this committee is gonna be based on, I like the size of it, that there's nine members. So that if we have empty spots and we need, I was clarifying with Peter that we only need five for a quorum on it. So if they're short two or three people, we're not gonna be rushed into just filling a spot that's empty because if we put the wrong people on this committee, it's, it's only gonna be as successful as the quality of the, the members of the committee. And I think the community has a lot of great people that are gonna, that are excited about, you know, bringing businesses into the town, but just being real careful about how, who we choose to put on the board or the committee.
Yeah, and I, I expect I don't know how soon it will be, but at some point we're going to want to have a conversation with you about a new urban renewal area, just because we have our downtown one and you know, we had our Portland State meeting not that long ago and one of the things that's really interesting about us is compared to other cities is we have a lot more land in our UGB. So, um, but we're, we're probably going to need some tools to kind of jumpstart some of that because some of that land's been vacant for a long time. And so on the housing side, it's usually zoning, which we've got. And then when urban services get there, that's, that's when we kind of seed the development. But what for, um, for businesses and something like a grocery store or a hotel, we're gonna need, we're going to need some things to encourage it. So I back before Zan got that project, um, under contract, I had some conversations with hoteliers. I used to represent a lot of hoteliers and I was the chair of the county's tourism board and, um, they were shocked at our population numbers. And they, um, were kind of intrigued. Um, but what they, they said to me, and I, I know this to be true, is that we're far enough away from any hotel that a hotel study won't be able to use those numbers. So the, the biggest thing won't be getting, um, a developer interested. It'll be that developer being able to get financing because they won't be able to demonstrate to a lender that we have the room rates. And there's no comp community that we can really pull. And so the, the comment was that it can happen, but it's probably going to take one or more combination of tools and, and that might be remitting the transient lodging tax to the facility. Um, it might be, um, it's in an urban renewal area and so they're able to use that. I mean, I, I don't know exactly how that would look or, or how many of those quote unquote spiffs they would need. And then the good news is that, that once, whether it's, um, market rate apartments or, um, like they got the building downtown Milwaukee. Once that first project trued up as far as the rents, it proved that there was demand for that toward a sort of, um, hu- higher end like five, six story, then everyone else is able to get financing. So the it's kind of counterintuitive, but sometimes for the first project, the city needs to more broadly participate in it. And then that creates a business case for the, the next projects and then you can kind of go. And that's what we're seeing with housing here in Estacada is higher-end housing get it, gets built and sells just, you know, immediately, then the the next project seems to be bigger. Yeah. So, yeah.
Good. All right. Any other questions for John?
So for, for the group, what, what do we think about term limits? We kind of touched on that. Is that something that would be worth talking about now? I was looking at Clackamas Counties and they've got in their, uh, Economic Development Commission no more than two consecutive full terms may be served by any member. I think the, the, the negative on that would be we have a hard time recruiting for commissions at times. So, you know, that would limit. But a positive may be they know they're not gonna be there forever as well too. This is gonna be a period that they would not serve more than um, two terms max. They could always fall off and not do it, right?
So they could get appointed, but then they'd still be able to have two full terms.
After the appointment.
Yeah, okay.
But we're doing variable terms?
For the, for the start.
Just for the start.
Yeah.
And then it'll go to three-year terms for all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, and again, that may be something that we think about for all commissions too. Yeah, maybe this is something we hit at strategic development or planning for next year.
Yeah, my, my reservation on that would be, you know, you, you get that person that has just got that drive and they've got that, you know, that experience and they, you know, they're, they're really passionate about their committee and, you know, they, they've served on, they serve on that committee and serve on that committee and they, they, they keep producing and I would just hate to see that energy, you know, that energy just be like, oh, your, your two terms are up, you're, you're done. You know, I mean, because I mean, we have a couple of people like that currently sitting on boards, um, that just are they're the driving force for those committees, you know, and I would just, you know, that's just one of the things, the one thing I'm, you know, one reservation I have is the, the fact that, you know, if, that we would lose that, you know, there's a possibility we would lose that, that energy and that drive.
I think, uh, on the Arts Commission, when I joined, um, a lot of the older people had left. So we were stuck there, not knowing what to do. And we basically had to start over. So I think there is something to be said for people that are experienced and having them stay if they want to.
I think the opportunity for the fresh blood would be that when they are going for reappointment, if that's the way we felt like we needed fresh blood on it, we could deal with it that way too, not reappoint them.
Yeah.
Yeah. True. I like all those ideas, but.
I do like the idea of term limits though too, like putting like a six-year, I mean, I think that's more than a mere time, but I could go either way with it.
Maybe that's something we hit down the line as, as we look at all commissions. And not worry about for this one.
And I think it's up to people who are in positions, you know, not only for other commissions or committees, but for city council as well. If you know that your time is coming up, you know, whatever we end up deciding that it's up to you sitting in that position to make sure that you're, you know, trying to bring somebody up along, alongside you who hasn't served as long, who is fresher to the committee and commission. Get them up to speed and say, hey, I'm trying to bring you up to speed and, and help like facilitate your growth and development. So, um, yeah, but I mean, I, I see the value in both. So I think we could probably.
And then we had made a statement about bringing in the youth.
Yeah.
Uh, in some fashion to government.
Uh, in some fashion to government altogether, to bring new ideas of the people that are growing up in it now. And I think that's something we have to really focus on at this point, is that we get fresh minds, young minds, coming into this field to do what it is we do. And understanding how it all works. So I think that's something we should be working at as well.
Is DEI still working on the youth council?
Yes. It's hard, it's been hard to. Get the school district to be involved, but they are working on it right now.
Yeah. Well, John, have you got anything else for us?
No, thank you, Mayor Council.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, about the, like, you'd like to see it more specific than tangible business connections. And we were trying to leave it vague so that like not say you have to live in the certain area, you don't have to live in nine seven oh two three. Um, but yet you could have, you could live someplace, but still have something that um. So you have something to offer with specifically related to business in Estacada. So I'm not quite sure. I mean, maybe you already have ideas of how to rephrase that, but if you have other ideas of how to, how you'd like to rephrase that. Um. Just to.
I guess I just see that, like, people like that where they don't own a business, live, work here in, in the city limits. Then they would be a non-voting, someone that you would want to bring in to care amount or hear, hear what they have to offer. They can still contribute. But the voting members. Is the way I was, I, it's not a huge sticking point for me, but I was just thinking more like, were you talking about business owners or? Who, who would be an example of somebody you would think that would not fit into that criteria?
That would be like tangible business connections would be somebody like workforce.
Workforce, yeah, and I think that would be workforce, but you bring up a good point. I mean, we want folks that own or connect to the business and, and own and, you know, have ownership interest in here. Um, I think the, you know, sometimes we could get someone like I was talking earlier from a financial institution that. Might apply, but you know, might work for credit unions, would, you know, that could come and forward to the council. That would be. Maybe a business that, you know, might not be here, credit union per se, but could be someone you're like, you know, this might be a member that we. Would want to bring some opportunities to connect our businesses or that opportunity there could be an example. Um. I think it kind of would, that would kind of be a, on a base by base cases, if we had someone in that area that applied, that was really interested in how they could. Help and, you know, the future of the town.
Well, maybe somebody from the community college.
Yeah, the community college, like I could see us having someone from, you know, the community colleges are doing a lot around economic development and workforce. So. I could see that being someone that would be not have a voting on the council, but would be. Beneficial to being there and coming for meetings to know everything that you're doing. And we have such, you have such a strong industrial park here. Um, it would probably be a great opportunity to have them participating too. I know they're very interested in working with the city here.
So one, one thing that I hear, that I read a lot uh, from our community is uh, you know, uh, that having that. Being so vague kind of scares me a little bit, getting some backlash from the community is um. Community wants people on these committees that have skin in the game, that are, that are here. Um, that live here, work here, whatever, you know, so I mean, just, just knowing that, that that's a huge talking point. You know, on, on social media, it's a huge talking point and, you know, in places where people gather um. Is the, you know, they want, they want people on these committees that, you know, have skin in the game, that have, you know, that, that are, you know, have. Something here. You know, they want the people that are uh, you know, helping us make decisions to be. To have roots here.
To feel the impact of the decision.
Yeah.
So I, I might have a suggestion. Instead of saying a tangible business connection, say. A decision maker for a local business. Would that be? Cause then you could have somebody who maybe is the manager, um, but doesn't live in Estacada. But manages it or owns it, but doesn't live in Estacada.
Yeah. That's more.
So that, that would be like a property owner. So I don't know whether hold home still has like a large amount of acres, but. That, you know, they don't, their business isn't in Estacada, but if they have a lot of land in Estacada. I mean, they would, it seems like they would have skin in the game.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, that's, that's more along that line.
Yeah.
That's doable. It's, it's a fine line, but it's doable.
We'll try to narrow that down. Did anybody, um, if you glanced through the, like the draft code, it's not in the right format yet, but. Um, was there anything that you noticed that you had? The um. Like the responsibilities and objectives that John ran through. Was there anything else? Or any concerns you had? I think it's pretty.
You know, for our first meeting, I think he drove it home pretty well. I mean. Um, getting this on the ground, I wanted to make sure that it was something that would benefit you. Because I know you guys are coming up on a lot of stuff. City's growing. We all know that, but I know it would be helpful. I remember in the early days when we talked about this and when John was out here and the industrial park was nothing. You know, and we had a lot going on and, and, and I remember the discussions about, you know, if we just had an economic group or, you know, something to, to sit down and figure this out. And I thought, well, now's the time. I mean, we're, we're there.
You are.
Um, so I'm glad that you brought all this forward and I'm glad that we're proceeding with this and I'm glad city will get some benefit from this.
Or, or as far as. Are we gonna use the, sorry, Sean?
Yeah.
Um, are we gonna use just the regular app, the same regular application that we use for all of our other committees? Or are we gonna um, create a new document? Um, cause this is, this is pretty. Specific, you know, we want some specifics, so.
So all of the committees have um, have separate applications because each committee has defined like questions that they feel applies to what they do. So I, I, we would us, put in questions in the application that would apply to this committee specifically. And I imagine that, you know, we would try and look for people. In various ranges of business sector, so we aren't really heavy in one single sector. And so making sure that that was outlined in the application that they told us where they were from, so that we could. Get a wide range of, of representation.
So we, we have a little bit of time here. Um, I, I've been floating an idea and I've, I've talked to Melanie about it. Um, we're having a real issue um, getting, getting and retaining volunteers. Not just on our city committees, but for the events that our city committees put on. So um. I would like to get some feedback. If, if this is not the right time, just tell me and I will bring it up at a different time, but. I would like to get some feedback from you guys on, you know, maybe forming an ad hoc committee, not a, not a committee, city committee, but get like one person. From our, our committees that we have going right now and, you know, um, no more than three city counselors to attend, so we don't have a quorum. But um, just to brainstorm ideas to. Get and retain volunteers because this community, um, when we were at twenty five hundred and fourteen people. Um, it seemed like we had a lot more volunteers now than, than we do now at fifty seven, over fifty seven hundred people. So um, I just know the struggle that, that these committees are having. I mean, that's the whole reason we don't have a summer celebration. Is because it, we can't get and retain volunteers. So I want to come up with a, a, a brainstorming meeting to get. You know, get somebody from one person, at least one person from each committee, a, a, a couple of city counselors, um, uh. You know, any city staff that would have any, that would be able to, you know, put in some ideas, but we really do need to come up with a, a solution to.
I, I, yeah, I like your idea, but we're going down a different path there.
Yeah, I need to add that to us.
When we put the city into that, we put counselors into that, we cross a fine line as to. The expectation of maybe the city council that's in there or the people that are picking the people from outside the council. I'd be afraid that we'd step over a line somewhere in there if we didn't like the other's choice and we wanted to make a choice and we were city council. And I don't, Peter, what do you think on that? I mean, is that something?
I mean, like when we say volunteers, are we talking about volunteer firefighters? Are we talking about, are we talking about people that would be willing to? Like. You know, take tickets at something? I mean, is it like what, I don't, what's the category?
Any and, any and all.
You know.
I mean, it, it really any and all is what I was thinking. Cause I mean, we, 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 for the longest time, we were just, we were having, we were having trouble just to get people to fill seats on our committees. You know, and it hasn't been the case lately, but I mean.
Yeah, I mean, my, my experience and some of this is, is a member of committee boards or nonprofit boards or whatever it is, is that. If people believe, if people see forward momentum and believe that they're doing something. Then they're willing to volunteer. Um, if they feel like their time is being wasted or they're having the same conversations over, over and over again, they don't, they don't want to. Um, as far as like getting. Getting and attracting volunteers, whether it's firefighters or anything, it's just. Getting harder. Um, people have so many things to do with their time. Part of it is publicizing how, how they um. How they can volunteer, what opportunities there are and getting them. Letting them understand that by doing this, they're investing in the community and, and they're meeting people and it's a better part of the community. If we can create some of those things. Co- culturally, um. That's. Then it kind of, it happens organically, kind of word of mouth. And that's, in my mind, it's just, okay. How can we, how can we get people to understand they're an important part of the community? And for the community to have. Good things, things for their families to do. Then we need some volunteers and, and hopefully they'll do it. And I think that's. If you look at the demographics of Estacada and how they're changing, we do have a lot of young families that are moving in and so. Kind of doing something like an adventure fest or something like that sort of summer event. I think it would be easier to get. Um, volunteers and then organizations like the American Legion and others. Where kind of a volunteerism is part of like the organizational ethos. Like going to them and saying, hey, we, do you have members that might be willing to, you know, take tickets to this or whatever it is? They. They can opt in, they often have networks that'll kind of allow them to plug in. So those are all things I would suggest. Um, but again, I think like. Kind of making it fun to volunteer, you know, whether they're coming in and they're getting pizza and they're. You know, they're getting the free Estacada t-shirt or something cool like that. That makes them, you know, feel part of the community. That's how you get kind of the return folks.
Not, that's what, that's kind of what, what I was getting at is, is to, you know, get, have this, I don't know if we want to call it a. Town hall workshop, whatever, but get, get a group, get somebody from that represents each, each one of our committees in here and brainstorm. Get these ideas out there, you know, to try to, you know, capture. And retain, you know, volunteers within our community. That's what I, that, that's what I'm asking for. If we could. If, if there would be interest in forming, you know, getting that, you know, it. Just a brainstorming meeting, a workshop to brainstorm ideas to. Get and retain volunteers.
Yeah, would you like me to add that to an agenda, a council agenda for April sometime and you could discuss it a little bit more? Sadie and Elena and I have been talking about that also, maybe getting some youth teams, um, where we could. Do like make a contribution to the team if they come out and help with some of our events and kind of. Get these younger families involved, but kind of give them an incentive to get going like the t-shirt and pizza and donating to their team. And so we've kind of been talking about some of this too. And so. Um, want to have a discussion about that? I could add it on to an agenda.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile. I remember at our Ford Foundation um, group, they talked about that, that there was a, it's been a trend since like the, the eighties or nineties of. Uh, fewer and fewer people volunteering. So it's a big hurdle to overcome, but communities have done it too.
So that was it with the Temba Festival on the fourth of July. When I was the president, we brought in the football team, the soccer team, the cheerleaders.
Cheerleaders.
And every day we had a different group of them and we would pay so much to their, their team to, to go forward and we gave them shirts and everything else and that, that seemed to work. We got a big, but the free. Uh, volunteers like we used to have, we used to put the tents up in town and do all that like we, I remember those days.
You know, and another thing that we don't, that, that we don't take, we don't take advantage of as, as much as we could is the, you know, in order to graduate high school, you have to have so many volunteer hours. And that's just one more thing that, you know, can be discussed during that meeting is, you know, how to take advantage, how to get interest from those graduating seniors. To use that volunteer time to volunteer for the city, you know, to be part of Estacada. You know, rather than volunteer, I know it's great to have them volunteer at, at businesses or whatever, but you know, I, 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 I'd like to see if there's some kids that would want to be involved in with the city, you know? Get some of those hours through us.
So would it help you if I had that discussion with Ryan and I had a sit down and just went over this to give it more? Oof, to get it off the, cause you said you were dealing with it and the school's not helping with that.
Yeah.
I think maybe if we put a little pressure in there, um, we might be able to get some of that started.
Yeah.
Um, and help with that.
And it's, it's also going to help with, with Heather Randall being on the downtown Estacada Commission, having it in already in the high school. Um, I've already talked to Ryan about. Um, getting our events, you know, um, there, the, of course they'll be filtered, they'll be, you know, they're, they're not going to post everything for, that the. Downtown Estacada Commission gives them, but all of the events that the city, that our city committees do are all going to go through. The downtown Estacada Commission and then into, and then into the schools that way, but not everything's gonna get. You know, you, we don't want to just completely bombard them with all of our events when they have so much of their own going on. But yeah, I mean, it's a, we're, 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 we're getting that started. But yeah, if you want to have a conversation with Ryan, it'd be great. That'd be, you know, the more the merrier. Um, if, if we, if we met with the athletic director and said, hey, we're willing to donate X for this number of volunteers and. You know, did it by team. So maybe it's the football team, maybe then it's like the cross country teams or whatever it is. And then gave people the, an opportunity to like donate to those teams or tip. Cause I think a lot of people would throw twenty dollars in. I mean, I just think, or however much by the, it could be a really good fundraiser for the sports teams. I know the um, downtown Estacada Commission used the, for Oktoberfest, had the boys' basketball team um, come down and they basically did that. I think they paid a little bit towards the, you know. A little bit to the boys' basketball team, but they came and did um, set up and cleanup, which was amazing. And those, those boys worked their butts off.
I would say not isolating it to the school either, cause a lot of the sports programs like the Estacada Youth Baseball and Softball Association. Uh, reaching out to some of the, the president of those, of those teams too, our clubs and. And then also a good resource might be checking in with the Dalton King Challenge. They have a large group of men that.
And this conversation right here that we're having, this is the kind of conversation I just wanted to get a little bit broader, not just, not just us, you know, but uh, get our, the people who are out there. Trying to get these volunteers, which are our commissions and committees. Um, they're the ones out there trying to get volunteers for their events and that's why I would like to include them in the conversation. So yes, I mean, if we could put it on a future agenda to talk more about it or, you know, or just. Create a workshop and do it. I mean, I would love to get, you know, as much input as possible.
I like the idea of the workshop better than an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, that's, I, I just misspoke. I said it wrong. I wanted it to be just like a one-time brainstorming meeting, not a committee.
Okay.
Well, John, we thank you. We got a little off track there, but.
No, I, I, you know, I just loved what you just talked about. Just really. That just excites me, just seeing, you know, getting your youth engaged and, you know, having them, it's time, it's the next generation starts stepping in and, you know. Having, having them engaged and being on and participating, what, what, that's so, that's just so wonderful to hear. You know, and the experience for them to learn about government is fantastic. So thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I will now close Estacada City Council Workshop, if there's nothing else that you'd like to add at this time. Okay, so you have.